Can you hear me?
Troy.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Says that my video won't start. They haven't given me privilege.
Well, good evening, everybody.
Evening. Yes, sir, I've given you privileges and I just requested for you to. You can show your camera. Blank screen. You can hear me, though?
Yes.
Okay, so just because it's six o'clock. Six actually, six oh two, we want to get started in the meeting, my video. I'm gonna work on that to see if I can get that going, but everyone can hear me. Let's just move right along. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the City Council Orientation Session. On this session is for any questions that the council may have of the administration as relates to agenda. As we go through, of course, the agenda, maybe some items that you look at that you may want to have any questions about, or you may not. Have enough information on, so let's just jump right into it. Now, Vern, I see here a presentation discussion, Middle Park Manor Block Club, what is that?
The president of Middle Park Manor Block Club. Wanted to talk about the project they're embarking on for speed bumps. Councilmember Washington referred them to the agenda for today. To either speak in comments or to give us a presentation.
Okay.
And secondly, Mayor, if I may, I want to know if everybody got their revised agenda.
Yes, I received mine.
Okay.
What was different from what you put out before outside of the NSP? African American Civil Rights and then the Middle Park Manor, what was different?
The minutes were included and there were two additional items in new business. So the original had two. Vacant parcels that were for sale and two special events. The revised agenda actually has four parts, four different land sales and the two special events.
Okay. I'm looking at the one you sent out.
Hey, man.
Go ahead.
Yes, I did not receive that. I still hold that lot. I'm working off a hot spot and a generator.
So I did not get the revised edition. Okay.
Right, and I'm actually looking at the email that Safe just sent me. And looked like I didn't receive that. So you have item A for discussion for Tracy Anne Jennings. Item B, Tracy Jennings.
Yes.
Item C, you have the old school jazz and gospel explosion at Brookside Park. Then you have. The writers, Utown writers, and item D, what was other to it?
They were both. Property sales with Tracy Anne Jennings. One was. A parcel located on the east side of Hickory Street between Beach Street and Chestnut Street. And that was to be sold to Will Arabi of Progressive Real Estate. And D is sell four separate vacant parcels located on the north side of Cherry Street. Between Hickory and Ash.
That's only revised, right?
Yes, Anthony Paisley. For $2,000.
And then the last two is for.
The Jazz and Gospel Explosion and the Riders Annual Car and Bike Show.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, hearing that, then I know that Councilwoman Wiley said that she, of course, she's dealing with power outage issues still, and that's definitely unfortunate. However. Hearing that and understanding that, do we want to? Add those additions on? To the business? Or are you guys okay with moving forward? Okay. Councilwoman Wiley, okay with moving forward?
I'm not comfortable doing anything that I don't have in front of me to read.
Yep. Okay, good, so we'll, we won't accept those two additions.
Okay.
We'll go with what was originally sent out. Okay. So any questions on the presentation that Middle Park Manor Block Club wants to do, or would they have some type of? Presentation clerk, I mean, this is kind of the first time I'm hearing about this, is this something that they will have, where they share their screen and give us a presentation, or just some thoughts, or are they asking us to do something, what was the discussion?
No, they just want to share what the Block Club is doing. So they don't have any material to share with us. The initial thought was to move it to public participation. But we thought it would be more than a minute. So it's not for action, so. It would be your pleasure, whatever you want to do, if you want to move it to public participation. Or leave it in the presentation spot.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind, it's one of our block clubs, and of course, we're, you know, trying to have more participation with block clubs, let's see what they're talking about. And move forward, when was it queued up, we're ready to go. When it's time for that, okay. Let's see, I didn't consider agenda, you just had, is that disinformation that you received as it relates to African American Civil Rights Grant?
Yes, that was read into the, the minutes at our last meeting. So I included it on the consent agenda with the meeting minutes.
All right, any discussion on item A of the previous business? This is on the, this is on the agenda again, just to, for this body to be able to deliberate, ask any questions. Make any comments. Also, too, if there's any changes or anything that you all would like to see. As it relates to us moving forward, what we're looking for is just. This body to be able to say that, you know, we want to, we want to do this here in the city of Inkster. And let's start the negotiations, let's, let's get a memorandum of understanding, let's get. An agreement together as it relates to a development agreement. As it relates to the letter of intent that we originally put before you all. Again, it was just to say that, you know, we're, we're willing to work with the developer. To figure out, you know, what the next steps are, so we had a town hall meeting, which of course, all of you attended. I know some questions came out of there, you heard different comments in the community. You know, just wanted to hear from you again as it relates to the discussion. And, you know, hopefully, we can have some action as it relates to the letter of intent for us to, again. Have our attorneys start to talk with. Lamont and developers from his team to see exactly what it is that we want. So then we can come back to you all with an actual memorandum of understanding or some type of operation agreement.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
So I saw in there, it was, it talks about a letter of intent. And I went back to our previous package, which basically said the same. Is this the same documentation to be used, because I noticed there was nothing in there but a request for council action in the presentation from the town hall?
Yeah, so, so again, I just want, I wanted to hear from this body, because you know, we deliberate here, so you all tell me, you know, as it relates to the letter of intent. Does it any changes that you want to make to it? Did you like it the way that it is? So we can, again, direct our attorneys to start moving forward. Or not? As it relates to this particular project. So it is the same letter of intent. But we need to change it up, if you know, again, Steve, I know that you were saying, you know, there's a few things as it relates to 99 years. That's right here, that's what we had this discussion at. There's a body, a motion to be made, change it, and then move from there. Mr. Mayor, can you hear me? But Councilman Chisholm still has the floor, so I always wanted to make sure that that's clear.
Okay, I just need to pull up my documents from the previous correspondences that I sent out, so I could talk about the changes I looked to see in the letter, but other than that, I yield the floor.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Councilman Williams.
I just wanted to bring out, because I did talk to him about that, and. What would he think about the possibility of bringing the lease down for 245, 45 years? And he said, and I, I believe he indicated that he wouldn't have no problem with it, so.
Would you say, would you say he? Would you say he, who are you talking about?
Lamont Robinson.
Okay. Yeah, and I think, you know, again, it's just up for discussion with this body, because I think the sticking part is just that, you know, in relation to. You know, that's why I had the planners on to talk about, you know, 99 year lease being common. And being commonly used in other municipalities, however, I know this is Inkster. And, you know, we want to see something different, you know, my thing is. With the developer, I know that he's going to be, once, you know, we say that we're going to work with him, and he has land control, that he's going to be looking for investment. And his biggest thing was just, you know, being able to say that he's locked in with the city of Inkster. And, and we have an understanding of what that understanding looks like, so. You know, if it's a, you know, 99 year, 30 year, 45 year, however. We just want to make sure that we have some options in there, I think that works for both parties.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, Councilwoman Wiley?
Yes, I have a procedural question to ask. First of all, how this got back on the agenda? Because it was voted down, and I thought that anything that was voted down had to be brought back procedurally by the next meeting. Can someone advise on that, the next meeting following it?
Right, and I'll let the clerk talk about that, but I know that we had brought it, we did bring it back the next meeting. And it was determined then that we would have a town hall meeting first. And then, you know, have a discussion with the community to see. What the buy-in was from the community at large, and then bring it back before the body, so. Correctly, then we could, you know, we can do, we could formulate something else to bring back to this body.
And continuing about bringing that, then one of the commanding votes had to. Say they wanted to put that on the agenda.
These are procedural questions, because I'm trying to understand how we got back there. Other than the fact that we knew everybody, everyone wants, no one's denying that, but. We are still procedures, so I'm trying to find out what those are.
They're bringing up bad.
I think the question was just as it relates to just the procedure of everything, and I know that. Like, again, you know, when I, when I brought it back, the following meeting after it was denied. You know, the consensus of the body, and it was just like, okay, we, we thought you was going to bring it back, why you didn't bring it back? So you needed to bring it back with some changes to it. So now I'm like, okay, well, let's not just have changes to it, let's have a town hall meeting, which we, we had a town hall and we heard from the community. So now it's back, but if it needs to be done differently, the clerk is on the line. And the attorney is on the line, so from a procedural standpoint. Madam clerk, if you could chime in to make sure that we're doing it correctly. You're on mute, ma'am. You're on mute?
I would have to do some research. Because I was under the understanding that. Because the body asked for a town hall or a public hearing on it, that we would be bringing it back. At the next meeting. Since we did not act on it at the, you know, town hall, it wasn't an actionable. Meeting, so I'll have to do some research and get back to the body.
Okay, so, you know, unless the city attorney can chime in and give us any more clarity on it, I think that, again, for discussion purposes. You know, I, I just want to make sure that this is being done right, we're not trying to rush this thing, because this is too big for us to rush, and. I think the town hall was, went really well. We want to have a number, a continued number of those surrounding this issue and approach other issues. However, we want to make sure that, you know, we're just doing it right as it relates to the process, so, so I get what Councilwoman Wiley is, is getting that, but. I've just been under the impression that, you know, from the last time that, and it was denied, it was like, okay, we just thought it was going to be back on the council meeting. I'm like, okay, I didn't think I was just supposed to bring it back to the council, you know, so I want to make sure that I'm doing it right. So you guys help me, let's, let's move it forward either way. What's your, what's your thoughts? Anybody can jump in anytime.
I thought, I thought we were bringing it back, and then the negotiations would come between the. The attorneys. Am I correct? And then we need, we need to say what we want to see in the contract with them.
Right, that's what I thought that we were, that's what I thought that this. This particular issue would be about, but I think what the councilwoman is saying is because. We didn't necessarily bring it back in a different. Motion. That this motion failed, so. Unless someone brings it back from the prevailing side, it shouldn't be on here. Is that what you're saying, Councilwoman?
That is exactly right, that was my understanding. And I don't know how good my audio is right now, but that was my understanding procedurally. You know, in order for it to come back, it had to be from the prevailing side.
Okay. Do we, do we have a member from the prevailing side that would agree to put this back on the agenda for discussion? Any, anyone?
I guess I'm lost, just. Because I thought we were discussing it now, but I know we're not in the official meeting where we would be talking about potentially voting on it, I thought we were just having a discussion right now.
Yeah, I think what the councilwoman was saying is that procedurally, it never should have came back unless the prevailing side brought it back. Which, you know, again, I, I know we've been going through this issue for, you know, several meetings now. And even after it was denied, you know, when I didn't bring it back on the next meeting, it was like, why didn't you bring it back, I thought you were going to bring it back, so. Just want to make sure that we're on the right page.
Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's the prevailing side, I, I think as proposed, the letter of intent. It did not receive a majority of the council members, but as you know, there was a lot of citizen. Complaints or comments, a lot of council comments regarding, some council members indicated that. You know, if certain clauses or agreements were changed, they might be amenable to, you know, revisiting the issue, I, I know Member Chisholm had several comments. That he, he would be amenable to, you know, a different discussion points and different negotiation points. So I think the, the proper matter, the city council, and, and the clerk and I will, you know. Collaborate and discuss what the proper action is. But the town hall didn't necessarily automatically make it an action item, it is not an action item. Until, you know, the, the party from the majority rule who voted it down. Votes to reconsider or revisit it, and I think Member Chisholm's concerns were that he would be open. To discussing different action items and terms, I think to bring it up. And to debate it as an action item as it previously existed would be incorrect. But if the subject, you know, the substance of the matter was different, it's a different action item. It can be brought up again and voted on completely different if. You know, comments that Member Chisholm had, or Member Watley had, or Member Howard had, the people who voted it down. If they saw things that changed in the letter of intent, which allowed them to bring it back before the body.
So David, so are you saying that the administration should have just changed the letter of intent? To fit what the, you know, the prevailing side was saying, and then bring it back?
I don't think there was a, I don't think that there was a unanimous opinion about what should or shouldn't be changed. But to bring it at, bring it back in its same content in which it was already voted down would be impermissible. Something different has to happen for it to be brought up before this body again. And I don't know if that's the administrators, in the administration speaking with. You know, Member Chisholm or whoever else has suggestions in a different form, it can always be brought up and voted on again. If one item is changed. Right now, you just can't bring it up in the same form that was already voted down.
Okay, so could we, for just, you know, again, just trying to get through this. Could we essentially change one item tonight for discussion, or how would you do that? Or should we just remove it from the agenda all the way?
Well, it's the will of the body, but if one, if one item is changed. It's not the same matter that was voted down, so it could be brought up, motioned up, and if it gets support, it could be voted on again. But I, I know Member Chisholm has several matters that he would, he had concerns with, whether it was the, you know, the term of the lease, whether it was. You know, the property address or whatever, if one thing is different, can always be motioned up, to get support voted on again.
But it has to come from the prevailing side, doesn't it?
No, I'm saying, for, for, for it to be the exact identical. Form of the letter intent that was already voted down, that would have to come from the prevailing side, but if one thing is different. Then anyone can motion it up, and if it receives support, it can be voted on.
Gotcha, all right.
That's the reason.
Let's stay in order, so go ahead, Councilman Williams.
That's the reason why I, I said that, that we were talking, just trying to maybe bring it down for the people who feel like it's a real long, long. Turnaround, it just, just drop the lease down to 45 years, okay, which he got three years to put the shovel in the ground, okay? And in 45 years, you can revisit, do whatever you have to do. I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure that, I'm pretty sure with, with, with 99 or 45 years, a lot of those things will be around anyway.
Yeah, I think that was the biggest, I think that was the biggest concern of everybody. On the side of the 99 years, that, you know, we allow the, the future generation to chime in if the land is still.
That's what we need to talk about, because I think that was the issue, wasn't that one of your issues, Steve? Okay.
Yes, that was one of them.
So. Well, that was one of your, one of your issues, okay, so one of them issues there, I mean, can you live with 45? And then we can take it back, if they can live with it, you know, we can try to do something on here.
I have some, I'm, I'm not sure, George, if he's still talking or not, I'm sorry, I want to make a motion or. Put a. Probably an idea out there as well, see if council agree with it or not. I just wanted to see, maybe we can do where. The obligation will of course be to the city of Inkster. And instead of the total of the 99 years, we could do a renewal. Of 33 years. And then with the option to buy, and leave it up to the city of Inkster to have the right to refusal. Or have them have the, you know, make the right, have the ability to say if they want to buy the land or not. So we could do it like that, that could be options as well.
Okay, well, let me just say this, I think that, hearing from the attorney. And what the item is and what we're asking for. If. We, we, we need to, if something like that has to change, so. We know that the 99 years was a sticking point for everybody. Overall, I mean, I heard one suggestion, you know, go 45 years and then go from there. Or either do. 90, well, 33, 33, and 33, where you have the developer in the city. You know, with some type of outlaws in between those years. And whether it's, you know, the developer buying the property. The city continuing on with the lease, I don't know how that would look, but I know that would definitely, both either way, it's going to take some work. So. I don't know what your pleasure is, but go ahead, all right, go ahead.
I, I know that the, the night, the 99 years was. Really, really for him to kind of have a selling point for himself to make sure that he can, he can. He can acquire the funding that he needs. Now, now, I know McKinnon Associates talked about that as well. So is this something that he needs? Or is it something that he can be flexible with? So that he can secure. Can secure the, the loans or the financing that he needs to be able to fulfill his obligation with the project?
Yeah, and I know that he was on the radio, Lamont Robinson, he was on a radio. Interview. Around 5:30 when I was talking to him earlier. So he won't be on until 7:00. But I know that he did express that. That, of course, you know, just. You know, development agreement and looking for stability for investors. You know, as far as leasing the property, then yeah.
Well, Mr. Mayor. After talking with him, it seemed like he might be in agreeable for the 45 years.
Yeah, that's all you can do is get him online, talk to him a little bit more, because I think that, you know, again, the, the general consensus from the body. Itself, overall, that's why it was voted down, you know, of course, probably a couple more reasons. But the biggest one was the 99 years. Being able to flex that out, I think you, you have some discussion on that. I think that's, that's been important.
Because, Mr. Chair, we, we definitely want him to succeed. And to be able to get the financing that he needs. To move forward, I, like I said, if I'm a, if I'm a, if I'm a investor, you know, I want to make sure that he can. The property is going to be there for quite some time, you know, if he going to get big investor, million dollar investors. But if, if he's flexible enough with the 45 years, I mean, that is a new change. But I know that that's a selling point for him to be able to get the monies that he need.
Mr. Mayor, if Councilman Shaw's finished, I have, I just wanted to make a statement.
Go ahead, please.
All righty, so when we were talking earlier about some of the concerns, I guess you could say that I had expressed, it was mainly timeframe and taxes. So yes, timeframe, the 99 years was one concern, and then the taxes, just from what was stated. But, and I wanted to say, since they are not purchasing the land, and the city will let them build on the land without paying any money until the building is complete. Because they will be leasing it, they should. They should pay a hundred percent of the assessed taxable value forever. Now, if you ask why, because they were paying little of nothing for the land. I would still need to see proof of funds or credit that they can complete the project. And of course, the city would have a first priority lien on the land. Because we know they will potentially be borrowing some money. And that is part of why they need the land is so that their investors and lenders and everything like that will say, okay. We know you're going forward with this project and the city is in favor and accepted of it. Um, and just the letter of intent needs to spell out all of those terms to protect the city. Uh, it was one more thing and I don't care what it was. If it comes to me. Oh, and another thing too, I know a lot of persons that said, well, you know, the school sat up there and you weren't, we weren't paying any taxes on it. But the, the, the other thing I want us to look at is the school. The return on the investment of a school sitting on their property tax-free was it was educating the people here in the community. So now we don't potentially have that. And I know during the campaign, um, some of the things from citizens. Where that they wanted to see our school system come back. And at this particular point. We thought we may never see the school system come back. But at the rate that the debt is being, if you will, reduced. Um, by the state of Michigan over certain spans of years, I feel pretty confident that. We'll be able to start negotiations or start talks with, uh, you know, uh, the, the state again about having an Inkster Public School System. So I, I just hope that particular mindset doesn't die in the event that we're looking at going into a, 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 a deal with. Lamont Robinson for the Rhythm and Blues Hall of Fame, because that's where the school wants set. And I know they're not looking necessarily at any other properties in the city. But still just want to keep that in the back of our minds, whether it's just the high school or an entire public school system. And that's all I have.
Yeah, I think Steve, you brought, you, I'm sorry, Councilman Chisholm, you bring up some really good points and that was actually spelled out during the town hall meeting. That, um, yeah, the lease agreement will cover a hundred percent of taxes. And that's what we were trying to get at, as it relates to, um, you know, paying the taxes and then the taxes going to pay down the school debt. Which we know that we're definitely working to eliminate that. And we're actually talking with Risa right now from the administrative side. Um, as it relates to, uh, Baylor Woods and School being there, still erected in the school district for our elementary services. And, you know, looking at the land itself with Lamont Robinson and having, if we see on those plans. Having, uh, Inkster Technical School District located inside of the Hall of Fame, similar to. What's happening down at the Henry Ford Museum. So you, 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 you hitting it right. I think we're hitting everything right on track, you know, the, the thing for me. And that, that I wanted, you know, everyone understands that, you know. He has goals to accomplish. He has things to hit. So for us, as it relates to the lien holder, if you will, and I, I really appreciate that fact because that makes, that makes total sense. Is that? If he does not hit those milestones, then the land comes back to us. So within the first three years, as it relates to showing the financials. Um, having the feasibility study done. Being able to say that I'm putting shovels in the ground on this particular date. Then the land, you know, it, it comes back to us during that time. Um, Lamont is in control of the land, so therefore he has to pay for the insurance. He has to pay for grass cutting and things of that nature. Now, my thing is, is once the shovels are in the ground, then you've got the money to pay your lease. So we're not saying to you then that, you know, it's gonna take you another year to erect the building or two years to erect the building. We're saying that you're gonna pay that first lease payment based off the assessed value that we're gonna get from the feasibility study. Of what should be sitting on that land and what's potentially going to be sitting on that land. Um, so, just for point of clarification, um. You know, when we talk about, you know, the letter of intent. Again, this is all to say to our attorneys, to the community. That we want the Rhythm and Blues Hall of Fame here in the city of Inkster. And that we're negotiating and all of those things that you just said will be into that language, not just a one-page. Document saying this is what we're doing, but you know, actual document talking about, you know, um, indemnification. Talking about insurance, talking about, you know, the developer agreement. So all those things operate. All of those things would be inside of that particular document. If, you know, this body agrees to go into an agreement with the Rhythm and Blues Hall of Fame.
And then all those things, all those things brought back to the council, correct?
Uh, no doubt, they have to be, yes sir.
Alright.
Yes, sir. The thing is, is that what, what we're trying to do, you know, do is, okay, we don't want Lamont spending money on his attorneys. For nothing. And we don't want to be spending money on our attorneys for nothing. So if you all agree that we can go into some type of deal with, um, Mr. Robinson. Then the attorneys are gonna get it together. With all the things that we have said that they've heard, that we want to see, put it into a document. To be presented back to this council for acceptance. Because then it'll be a binding contract.
So, so the intent letter, the, the last intent letter that we had. Um, said twenty percent, so we are going with a hundred percent. For the, um, full price of the property taxes. So. The opposing side, would they make that motion and then is that how we go into discussion for the intent letter?
For, for what I'm hearing, if we want to keep what we have on the agenda for tonight, then it needs to come from. Um, a member of the prevailing side to say that they would, you know, accept a, a change.
So.
Well, I mean, just, I'm sorry, and sorry, Mr., sorry, sorry, Councilwoman Washington. But just to address Councilman Williams, you said that was, that's not true. What is it that you're saying is not true?
If we come up with a, a better, uh, negotiation too, that we, we want to, then that goes, that goes back to them. To come back and it's, you don't have to take a, a person to vote against it, only the original thing that we had.
Right, exactly. So what I'm saying is it relates for tonight's meeting. Because of the information that's on tonight's meeting, is the original letter of intent that was voted down. That someone from the prevailing side can say tonight, that we can leave it on the agenda. But we're gonna make this change as it relates to the ninety-nine years or forty-four, from ninety-nine years to forty-five. Um, and then we can move forward, or. We just remove it from the agenda altogether, and then the administration brings it back. For the next meeting with forty-five years in there. And then all the other things that we talked about as it relates to the changes, because then it would be a completely different. Um, document for discussion and action. So unless someone from this body that was on the prevailing side would say, you know, hey. I'm okay with you guys moving forward, we're moving forward tonight. With the same letter of intent for, I'm gonna take out the forty-five years, whatever it is, a ninety-nine year, make it forty-five or twenty, make it a hundred. Then this is gonna be a new point tonight. And David, correct me if I'm wrong, is that? What we're talking about right now? Am I saying that correct?
Yes, you are, Mayor.
Okay. Alright, so. Again, everybody's heard from the attorney, everybody's heard, um, what we, what we've been talking about. Um, the other things on the agenda tonight, of course, are the, um, the few land sales and a couple of local. Um, community things that's happened. But for this issue, to stay on the agenda tonight, we would need someone from the prevailing side to actually change or be willing to change. One of the articles that were presented before you as it relates to the letter of intent. For it to stay on the agenda tonight. If it does not happen that way. Then what we'll do on the administrative side is that we'll go back in two weeks, we'll come back with. Um, a different letter of intent, where, where we heard from you all as it relates to what you'd like to see in.
But we will still have discussion tonight to make those changes for the future, correct?
Well, no, it won't be any discussion.
Alright.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna go ahead and send over, uh, what I had spoke of earlier again, because I sent this in the past. And if any of these points can be incorporated in there, a, a new rough draft or hard copy of the letter of intent for, uh, I guess my review and my colleagues' review. That would be sufficient to me, because as it stands right now, I know the hard copy or the, the one that we're talking about is from the past. And is, is, it's gonna be kind of hard for me to vote on anything tonight, um, in its current form.
Okay, so just so we're on the same page, Steve, I think everything that you just talked about. I think the general consensus of the body is, is, is okay with what you were saying. So if you just send over what you said, you said you sent it over before, it's, was that just in your email that you sent over recently?
Uh, not, not the one from the town hall. This was one sent, I think, prior to us taking the vote in June.
Okay, if you could just send it back so it can be to the top of our. To the top of my email, make sure you see burner on it as well. And, uh, we'll get those changes made and then we'll pop it back on for the next council meeting.
And then I, I guess too, um, because you know, because Mayor Protem is not with us tonight. Um, I don't recall exactly what her concerns were, but that would give her an opportunity as well.
Yeah, 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 I'm good with that. So we're just gonna remove, uh, item A on previous business burner. And then that'll give us a chance, like, uh, Councilman Chisholm was saying, to get that back out to the body after we meet tomorrow with the, with the admin. Uh, we'll go through it, make sure that we send it all back out, make sure we catch everything that we need to catch. And then we'll send it out to the entire body for them to review over the next week. And then get ready for council meeting on next, on the, the following.
So question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Are we coming back with a new letter of intent?
Yes, we are. And then, uh, we'll be able to talk with, um, Mr. Robinson a little bit more about what he's, uh, you know, what he's looking for. It's just like, uh, Councilman Shaw brought up as it relates to, you know, him, you know, going out looking for investors. You know, maybe that's a sticking point for him. Maybe he'll say, you know, hey, if I can't get ninety-nine years, I can't, you know. If I can't get this in the form of ninety-nine years, because I have seen going through this now, I've been talking to other mayors. And talking to other developers and communities and, you know, it's all types of options that we can do to get up to ninety-nine years. However, um, you know, it has to work for him, just like it has to work for us. And we want to be, if we can be, we want to be unified in this front, so we'll bring it back next time around with everybody's input on it.
Okay, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Councilwoman Wyatt.
You know, computers. Able in over a week. So, we are all sending our suggestions in, that's what we wanna see, because basically, uh, what we need.
I can't hear nothing you're saying, listen, man.
I, I was listening, I was hearing her, but she was fading in and out. But you were saying that you've been away from a, a computer for about a week. And, and, go ahead, as it relates to your suggestion.
But we are, we are sending in suggestions today and more tangibles. The better.
Yes, and what she said wasn't very good, you didn't hear, is that, uh, we're all sending in suggestions. And then we, you know, formulate those and give them back out to everybody, because we necessarily, we can't. Deliberate on email, but it relates to the suggestions. The administration is going to take those and then bring back an, an item for discussion and action. Is, is that okay, Councilwoman Wyatt? And I couldn't hear you, ma'am, if you had anything else.
No, that would be it for now. I'm just making sure we're all doing this and then. The, all the information will be incorporated into this document. For us to look at again, and it will include tangibles this time. One other question. Is his intent to use the land as collateral, the bond money? Because can that be done with the having a lien on it?
Yeah, for sure. So that, that's a good question. We'll make sure that we had that question for him, but I'm pretty sure. And I wouldn't necessarily say even with collateral, because the land, again, you know, based off of, uh, our assessors. Um, if the information that we received from the assessor. The land for per acre is four thousand dollars, like four thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And when we did the, the, the state equalized value. Compared to the fair market value, it came up to like seventeen thousand dollars. We actually tripled that number from the four thousand number. Uh, where we tripled that number. So it, it gave us that five hundred thousand dollars. So he, he can't necessarily, he's not necessarily using the land. I don't think for thirty million dollars in collateral, because it's not worth that. But at the same time, I think, you know, when we talk about. Lur- lowering an investor. He's saying that, you know, I have a prime piece of land. This is where I'm at, um, I partnered with the city. And it just makes it attractive for a developer to come in and say, okay, I, I, I can put my thirty million dollars into this area. That's what I think he's using the land for.
Well, and one other thing. He meant, we, I'm probably once before about his investments, how many and so on and so on. Would that be part of the information we will get this time around?
Yeah, I can't speak for the, I can't speak for the, uh, for Lamont as far as the develop, the developer and how that's going to go. But, um, I know that he does have some investors at the table and, you know, you were at the town hall, it was other people. In the local community that wanted to be investors as well, so. Um, I don't know how that'll, that'll look, but I definitely had that question for him, for you, Councilwoman Wyatt.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and for you guys who are just joining me, I'm, I'm sorry, just joining the, the, the council, um, orientation session. We're just taking this time to answer any questions or have any comments as it relates to tonight's agenda. We'll be going into general session. At, uh, seven o'clock, please forgive me, my camera is out for whatever reason, I'm here at City Hall. Um, I'm gonna try to keep you with it a little bit, but I don't want to lose connection. So I think I'm just gonna leave it alone and just go through the meeting. Um, so at any rate, unless anyone from this body had any other. Questions or comments as it relates to any other agenda item for tonight's agenda. Um, let's take a break here. And go into seven o'clock unless, David, you have something very quickly for us to close session.
We do have two quick close session items. One matter is Blackwell, the other matter is the Shabazz litigation.
What's your pleasure, Council?
The move.
So, please.
Alright, uh, give me roll call, Bernard, go into close session about those two matters.
Okay. Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
And Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor, we have a quorum.
Alright, we're going into closed session right now to the general population. It's our viewing, um, us right now, we'll be back out hopefully at seven to start the general meeting. Troy, take us on. Alright, looks like we got everybody back. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the Houston City Council. Today is August the sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, and the time is now seven oh two P M. Please forgive me for my camera, uh, my camera's actually out, um, I'm having some technical difficulty with my computer. But I, I am alive here at, uh, City Hall. Before we get started, we will have prayer. Um, Reverend Williams, if you could pray for us, and then we'll have the Pledge of Bellegence and then after that roll call. Reverend Williams? And I think that he's on mute this time. I think I can say, now you're not, go ahead. Go ahead, Reverend Williams.
I'm sorry. Father God, we come right now and just say thank you. Thank you for what we bought from life and strength. Father, we just thank you for bonding us together, that we can speak and talk and get along with one another. Father, we just thank you for bonding us together that we can speak and talk and get along with one another. Father, we just thank you for the city of Ince, the love city that we, we're going to continue to try to make Ince a better place. Full of love and commitment. Father, thank you and watch over our mayor and our council person, Father, as they make decisions that. That we can be fruitful here in the city of Ince. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. All rise for Pledge of Believers to the flag. Troy, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, roll call, please, City Clerk. And I know that, is she on mute this time, Steve?
No.
Okay, there you go.
Mayor Protem Howard. Excuse absence. Councilmember Williams. He's present.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Present.
Councilmember Wally.
Yes, I'm appearing, I'm appearing remotely from my home in East of Michigan County of Wayne.
Thank you. Councilmember Chisholm.
I'm going to report, reported virtually from my home, city of Ince, County of Wayne.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaw.
Here in the city of Ince.
And Mayor Wimberly.
Reporting live here in the City Hall. Here.
Mister Mayor, you have a quorum.
All right, then we have a quorum. Let's move right on into approval of the agenda with. The omitted, omitted item, I'm sorry. Um, we're going to remove on previous business, item A. Discussion and action considering authorization. For the assigned of the tent and tent letter. So just for the general public, um, we typically have. On what we call our orientation session and we talk about items on the agenda. And this is not to say that we're not doing the Rhythm and Blues Hall of Fame tonight. Um, this is, uh, simply for we can be decent and in order and bring the item back to the agenda. In a way that everyone on this body feels comfortable with voting on. So we're going to remove the, the item from the agenda tonight, and then we'll see the item come back up. Um, on the next council meeting, which is the first council meeting in September. All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
The move.
Support.
Moved and properly supported any other discussion.
I, if I may, Mayor.
Yes.
I thought we were removing the consent agenda as well.
No, the agenda, the consent agenda could stay, right? Or do you guys, do you guys want to remove the consent agenda as it relates to the minutes and the N P S? African American Civil Rights, right? The acceptance of those things. I think we were okay with those. I think it was just the other two items that we were talking about adding. So, so we're not adding those items, so we'll stay with the whole agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
We, 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 we will be adding the minutes because the minutes is not in this packet, I don't think.
So you want to remove from the consent agenda right now? Is that what we're saying? Because we know it's in the E packet that Verna just sent out, but, um, we're just going to remove it for next full round.
Yeah, because the, the, uh, uh, Councilwoman Wally didn't want to, to do anything that she hasn't saw, so.
Right, yeah, she didn't have an opportunity to see the minutes as well. Okay, I agree with that. Okay, so let's remove those items as well, Verna, you were right. So there are no items under the consent agenda?
Correct.
All right, sounds great. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right, then roll call, please, Vern.
So we'll have, um. Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Wally.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. Move right along.
Next presentation.
All right, from Middle Park Matter Block Club. We have that person identified that's going to be speaking.
Do we have a representative from the block club? Middle Park.
And. I don't know who we're looking for.
It's Hanisee Sabree.
You know, he's on the call?
He should be, uh, I can. Check and see.
There's Dolores Sabree.
No, I, I do see her. I wonder. She is muted. So.
Give her directions, Councilman Chisholm, to raise her hand if she is the first.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, so, um, he's actually muted and he's not able to unmute himself. So the host will have to unmute him.
And what's his number? Or his name?
Hey, um, Hanisee Sabree is.
It's three, one, three, the six, nine, five, four, eight, four, six, eight, six.
We just sent him the request to unmute. And he may have to press star six from his handset to manually unmute as well.
All right.
Yeah, I'm not, not sure, um. Uh, I've sent the request, but there it is. He's unmuted now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is Hanisee Sabree. Can everyone hear me?
We can, honey. And you're here representing the Middle, Middle Park Block Club?
Yes, I am. I appreciate it.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so. That's all, Mayor and Council. Uh, one of the main reasons I'm here, I just want to start off by saying, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Middle Park Manor Block Club. And, uh, foremost, I just want to mention that, uh, one of the main reasons for my presence is to, uh, basically try to garner. Just approval and support of the mayor and council as it relates to a project that involves installation of speed bumps. Uh, two streets in particular that we were using as a pilot test, and those streets are, uh, Wellsley and Meadow Lane. But just want to make sure I mention that. Along, uh, with that, as far as just my intent. Uh, we basically put together a strategic plan. And during the presentation, I just want to touch on some of the details of that plan, if I may. And I know, uh, for starters, uh, one of the first steps we did was to, uh, circulate a petition. On those designated streets, uh, basically just to, uh, get some feedback from the community, which from. What I was observing and what I was told was pretty positive, the initial, uh, petition. Uh, furthermore, we did conduct some research, uh, basically to find out just the cost of each individual speed bump. But actually, as far as that, the types of speed bumps, and that would be the rubber and also the plastic. By which the approximate cost was between a hundred and a hundred and fifty dollars each. Along with that plan, uh, we wanted to have at least four, four of those speed bumps installed. A total of eight between Wellsley and, uh, Meadow Lane. And just in terms of, uh, the installation, our initial thought was to have them installed professionally. And I just wanted to, uh, make sure I point out just, uh, how critical this particular project is. Uh, based on the simple fact, there's been a lot of just reckless driving on a regular basis. Now, in that particular area as far as the Middle Park Manor area. And just to be, uh, frank with you. Uh, if something more permanent is not put into place. Then I would say it's only a matter of time, you know, before someone is seriously injured or worse. And that's why I really been putting together the plans, we've been, uh, meeting, uh, corroborating and trying to get this put forth. I do want to mention because it is, of course, very important in terms of expenses and the cost, you know, at this point. The Middle Park Manor Block Club was going to run and cover all the expenses. And so that's really, uh, see, Mayor Wimberly and the council, that's really just a summation of what we're planning on doing and what we've been working on for months. Uh, so I thank you, of course, for listening. And, uh, Mayor Wimberly, at this time, if you or the council had any questions, I'll try to answer those for you.
I appreciate that, um, you know, but let me say this, honey, I, I, I know that, uh, you're definitely dedicated to our community. Um, and along with the middle, uh, Black Manor Block Club, we really appreciate what you guys and initiative that you're trying to, to do. Um, what I would need for you to do, big first step is to get with, uh, Mr. Vivins, uh, Jerome Vivin. Um, is our director of D P W. And, you know, have him look at what you all are proposing. Um, of course, and then secondly, um, work with our chief of police, uh, Chief Riley. And just make sure as it relates to the emergency routes and things of that nature, as it relates to, you know. Police cars and ambulance being able to get through and not being impeded. Um, but we appreciate you all taking the initiative. That's what we all have to do. As it relates to, this is our community and, you know, only we can change. So that's, that's what you're trying to do. So. You know, you won't have any red tape on this side, I'm pretty sure. Um, but I know that as it relates to just, just the process and what we need to do, those are the two things that we need to do first. So I'll work with you directly to make sure that that happens. Mr. Vivins, he was, um, he, he won't be back until Wednesday. He's at a conference. He'll be back Wednesday and we'll make sure, because it sound like we need to move on this quickly. From what the comments that I heard you're making, that's around the whole community. So we can use this as a model in, in your area. I know that it's other black clubs and other community members that want to do the same thing on their streets. So, um, I, I applaud you for taking the initiative. Uh, any questions to comment?
No problem.
Any questions?
Appreciate that, Mayor W.
Yeah, no problem, no problem, honey.
Got a question, uh, this Councilwoman Washington, um, just want to applaud, uh, Middle Park Manor. Uh, for their dedication and how I need, uh, Sabree for coming and presenting that, um, because I'm sure that the residents would be. Very pleased, um, with it being installed and just you guys coming together and coming up with that idea. So. Just want to say thank you.
Uh, no problem. Thank you as well, Councilwoman Washington.
All right, so, so we'll be getting right to you. Honey, if you got my direct number, don't.
I don't believe so. I think I just have the number at City Hall.
Okay, why don't you write it down real quick, three, one, three?
Okay.
Nine, four, two. Zero, zero, seven, eight.
Zero, seven, eight. Okay, thank you.
You have nine, four, two, zero, zero, seven, eight. Shoot me a text message, let me know that it's you. Um, just that I get, I get a lot of calls in that number. Um, and then we can get back with you right away, so we can get some motion started on that. We do have an administrative, uh, team tomorrow. Where we can, uh, bring it up to the superintendent, uh, Victoria Joyce, she's on the call right now. As well, so we can see how we can get moving together quickly. And I know that the chief of police is on the line as well, so we'll definitely get that motion quickly.
Yes, sir, that sounds solid. A well do, and I appreciate that. We appreciate that, shit, I said.
All right, sir, have a great rest of your day. Or evening.
You do the same. Thank you.
All righty. All right, getting into it, uh, nothing for consent agenda. Going around boards and commissions. We're on council, boards and commission. I know that, um, we do have, you know, we've been trying to get a quorum on our TIFOR board. We did appoint a couple of members, so, um, City Clerk, if you could, please. Get with the chair, the TIFOR board and any other of our boards and see what attendance is looking like for people. I know that.
Okay.
Bills, me, I know the zoning board of appeals has a couple of things coming before it to make sure that those members will be there. Um, because what we don't want to do is we don't want to waste people's time. You know, people that, you know, are really trying to work with us in the city. Um, also true, you know, of course, those mem, those, those members and commissioners who have, you know, dedicated their time to serve, you know. We don't have a forum and they're just, you know, sitting there, then. You know, it's kind of disheartening. So we want to make sure that we're about the business of the city. So if people want to serve, we want to make sure that they're serious about serving, get them, you know, get them going in the right direction. So if you could follow up for me, please, I really appreciate it. Okay, guys, anyone, any, the appointments, boards and commissions. I will be sending you a couple of resumes over the next, uh, week or so. Um, I have a couple of commitments. From our folks that want to serve on the Eastern Housing Commission. People have said they want to serve, you know, I'm just trying to get, get some new blood circulated within the community, within the system. So, um, I know that we had a lot of folks reach out and say, you know, that they want to serve in those capacity. Um, at the same time, we, we definitely, we appreciate you. We don't want to burn you out, you know, that you may be serving on another board or commission, so. Definitely want to give, um, some of our other citizens an opportunity to serve if they're willing to serve. But if they're not, then hey, it is what it is. So, uh, the council, I will be sending you through, uh, the City Clerk, a couple of resumes for appointments for, um, the Eastern Housing Commission. We do have a vacancy there, Stephen.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Councilman Shaw.
I know we, um, I, I appointed, tried to appoint, um. Uh, former councilwoman, Dietrich Richardson, to the Commission on Aging. And now, to my understanding, that they don't really have a vacancy from the last, uh. Agenda packet that we had. I don't know if the, uh, former councilman, uh, Tim Williams was sworn in to that vacant spot yet. But I know that the councilwoman expressed to me that she, she doesn't want to be an alternate. She wants to be a full, full member of the commission, so. I would definitely want to remove her, um, from being an alternate until there's such a vacancy open. And if we also can reach out to the councilmen to, uh, bring them in to be sworn in for the Commission on Aging.
Yeah, I know that, uh, that Councilman Williams was at the last meeting that we had, because I tend to know meetings regularly. And he was at that meeting. Um, I don't, I thought he was there as a member, but obviously he hasn't been sworn in. He wasn't, for sure. Um, Chris Chapman, if you could, please make sure that we get him ASAP. He can call from Shaw. Any others?
We'll reach out.
Okay, here and now, let's get off to, uh, new business.
Okay, new business nine A is to consider selling one vacant parcel. Located on Harriet Street between Beach and Carlisle Street. Um, to Michael Wells for five hundred dollars.
So move, Mr. Chair.
This court.
Support.
Moving properly supported discussion. Here and now, roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Wally. Councilmember Wally.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vote is five, zero.
Motion carries, next item, item B.
This is for, um, consideration and authorization to sell two separate vacant parcels. Uh, the first parcel is located on Florence Street on the north side. Between Princess and John Daly. The second parcel is located on Yale Street between John Daly and Princess. On the south side of Yale, and those properties, um, are being sold to Sonia Jennings for a thousand dollars.
So. This court.
Court.
Moving properly supported discussion. Here and now, roll call, please, City Clerk.
Councilmember Wally.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
The same.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
You have four yeas and one sustain.
All right, motion carries, moving to the next item, please.
So this is for consideration and approval for Barbara Albert of Inkster to hold the Old School Jazz and Gospel Explosion on September fourth, twenty twenty-one, from noon until eight P M. At Brookside Park.
Let's play.
Don't move, Mr. Chip.
This court.
Support.
Moving properly supported discussion. Hearing that roll call, please.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, you have five yeas.
My motion carries, I can be.
And the last item is approval for the Ink Town Riders. Third Annual Car and Bike Show, September fifth, twenty twenty-one. From ten A M. Until dusk at the former Inkster High School site.
Go move, Mr. Tim.
This court.
Support.
Moving properly supported discussion. Hearing that roll call, please.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
That would be five yeas, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion carries, this brings us to, uh, public participation. Um, Councilman Chisholm, if you could please give them, give our audience. The protocol.
Sure. For those of us, hmm, for those residents who have joined by this Zoom application. Please use the raise hand feature to raise your hand to be recognized. For those who have dialed in by telephone, please use star nine to raise your hand to be recognized. When you are recognized, you will have one minute to address this body. Please state your name for the record. Of course, for those who might be viewing in the Facebook audience, you do have to call into the meeting or be on the Zoom application in order to be recognized for public comment. At this time, Mr. Mayor, we have nine hands raised.
All right, let's start with, uh, Octavia Smith.
Octavia, you are unmuted.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council, um, residents. Just want to come with you bringing greetings. From Western Wayne Family Health Center, we are here for all your health needs. Of course, to remind you guys of the Inkster Task Force, we have our farmer's market every Wednesday from four to seven P M. Um, and the Inkster Chamber of Commerce, you know, we are in the midst of our yearly calendar ad. Um, so we are doing our fundraisers at this time. If anyone is interested in placement ad, it could be your birthday, it could be your business. Or it could be just something that you would like to share. Please contact the Inkster Chamber of Commerce at gmail dot com. And also I did want to say that I have seen a couple of people around the city cutting down trees. I see a lot of down wires and things like that, or a lot of wires that's connected to trees. And I was just wondering and hoping that we can get some of those, some more of those folks out to cut down some of those trees to stop, um, getting entangled in the power lines. And that's all I have. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. All right, unfortunately, um, we're, it seems like we're getting a lot of different names and just people. But we did get from our tech, our technician that looked like we're being, trying to be bombed. But I don't recognize the name, I would not be calling you. So, um, if you want to email in or email into the clerk for your comment with your phone number, we'll put it into the record. But other than that, we'll not be recognizing you at work. All right. Shirley Hankerson.
She is unmuted.
Evening, Mayor, Council and citizens. Um, I just have one comment, um, and it's been bothering me a lot. I'm sorry. Uh, but, um, I think, I, I know you put the, um, museum on hold. Um, the Rhythm Blues Museum on hold, that's fine. Um, in the meantime, I think that every councilperson should have a town hall with their citi- with their citizens in their district and discuss this with them and get their opinions as well. Because, um, a decision of hundred, a hundred plus people does not make the city. We have twenty-four thousand people here. And we need to get as many people as we can out to vote on this and know what they're, what they're voting on and why. And know that they're still paying taxes for the debt for schools. Okay? And that's my only comment. Um, have a great evening and I love you all.
Robin Brothers.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, first I would like to start off by saying, I appreciate the council and all the due diligence and work that you guys put in to the city of Inkster. Um, and I would also like to thank everyone that, uh, came to that, uh, the police event. That was very beautiful. Okay. My issue currently is that I live on Norfolk. And right behind me, I have people like drug addicts and things like that that are illegally dumping. And, uh, it's at an address on Princeton. I've contacted Officer Wall, which is with the code enforcement. I've left several messages with Officer Wall about the illegal dumping. Okay, they're putting tree trunks back there. They're putting trash back there. I have rodents that are coming into the backyard because of the illegal dumping that's being done behind. Also, I have talked to Mr. Vivins. For about three years about the semi trucks that are coming down my street. They're taking an illegal route. They're breaking down the pavement on Norfolk and Wellington. This has been ongoing for three years. Because they're going to this plant that is behind me, the Valicor plant. Um, I don't know if there's anything that you guys can do about that. I don't know if police can monitor this area. Uh, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brothers. We will follow up. Ian Sims. I recognize Ian Sims, best one.
I don't see his, oh, there it is. I was overlooking it.
Good day, Mayor, Council. How's everybody doing?
Good evening.
Hey, uh, I just wanted to, uh, just come on and make an announcement, um, to let Mayor and Council know that, um, on Thursday, uh, August the nineteenth, uh, we will be holding a press conference at, uh, four, three, three, six, William Street. Um, so we're opening it up to the public and to, uh, to ask Mayor and Council, uh, to come out, uh, for the big announcement uh, that we will be making that day. Uh, the press conference will start at eleven o'clock A M. Um, so please come on and join us, uh, at four, three, three, six, William Street. And it is open to the public and to Mayor and Council as well.
Thank you. Mr. Butts.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. I am Commissioner Ashana Butts and tonight I am representing the board. We have had some concerns brought to us about the parks. And the upkeep of the parks. And we've also had some concerns come to us about the budget and how it's been spent in regards to equipment for the current football team. We are in support of our football team. We definitely are. But we do have questions and we do need to provide our citizens in our districts with answers because we are being presented with a lot of questions that we are unable to answer. So we are looking to hopefully get some things resolved with our parks. And hopefully with the questions in regards to the budget and how it is being spent in regards to our programming. Thank you and have a good evening.
Okay, and then Commissioner Butts, let's get on my schedule along with, uh, Mr. Reed, who is the treasurer and our parks director. That we, and also too, let's get with, uh, Mr. Vivins, we'll get him on our schedule. Um, my executive assistant is online right now that way we can, uh, talk with you and then answer the questions that you may have. But I'm pretty sure that Mr. Green has been, um, at your meetings, he just had a meeting this past Thursday. So you know, those questions should have been addressed at that time unless it just came up over the weekend. So.
Well, uh, the meeting had to be canceled because that was the day of the power outage. And the inclement weather, so we weren't able to have our meeting that day. Um, I did have personal conversations with the director, uh, that day. And, um, there are just some things that, that really need to be cleared up.
Yeah, that's what we're here for. So we definitely make sure we do that and we move forward. That's what we want to do. All right, then.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Dennis. Dennis, your help makes me happy. Uh, Jean.
In this pastor, Jean Olbermann, how is everyone? Thank you. Hopefully everyone's doing very well. Just a couple of announcements. I had shared it at the very last council meeting. There's searches in the community that have on to be sites for testing as well as the COVID vaccine. And Operation Refuge and Christ Temple City of Refuge are one of the sites along with Pastor Joe Stevens. So if you need to get that, we do want you to have access as well as Western Wayne Family Health Centers. As we see the numbers are creeping up. Also, we have food in abundance with, uh, Mother's Pantry. Wednesdays, ten o'clock, please stop by if you're in need. We also have diapers and you just let us know the sizes, we're able to help with that. We're moving right along with our summer programming and our facility, um, for the days coming along. We're doing the butterfly garden. So if you have any vision for that and want to help, please let us know. Thank you so very much.
And again, if you called in, you're using just a number, we can't see your name. If you could, I'll put your name in the chat. I can recognize you. In the chat, or you can email us direct to city clerk at cityofEaster dot com with your comments. This is only time for comments. All right, then let's go right to, uh, city clerk, do you have anything for us?
Funny that we will have an election. An election on November second. It only affects District one and District three. It's the Taylor School Board Millage. So there's more to come on that in the coming weeks. And that would be all that I have.
City Treasurer, you have anything for the body?
Um, yes, uh, G F L Bring for Life will be having a job fair, uh, Wednesday, August the twenty-fifth from five to seven at the rec center. They'll be bringing a lot of pamphlets and information for anyone that's, um, interested in possibly working with them. And that's it, there.
Council. Councilman Shaw, you want to go ahead?
Yes, I just have a couple of things and I, and I send these also, uh, to you, Mr. Chair, in, in an email form as well. So that you can get the pictures that will be attached to it. Now, I just had, uh, uh, some things on Inkster, Inkster Road, the corridor there. Um, I know you said Mr. Vivins is out of town, but the underpath of Inkster Road, I know is, you know, is looking kind of uh, shabby there. And, uh, if we can get, you know, reach out to maybe the county or what have you.
Yeah, we've done, we've done that too. And I just want to make sure that you, you're, me and you on the same page, Councilman Shaw. We have done that with the county. Uh, the county is just like, you know, with, like everybody else is short on people right now. So we're trying to figure out how we can do it in-house, uh, without, you know, of course, the numbers going up because it does look terrible down there.
Yeah, you, you have that big, I mean, you know, there's a tree that fell down, down there, the grass, the, you know, the breaking of the pavement down there, but middle belt under path is, you know, is, is, is looking decent. But, you know, we definitely want that, you know, Inkster Road corridor is looking well too. So I, I hear what you're saying, you know, with the manpower, what have you, but still, you know.
We gotta get, I told you, you're.
Yes, sir. And then just, just some updates on the, you know, business. I know we, we talked about this business and we, we, we were for the business down the street at, um, supposed to have been a, I think, a jewelry store or pawn shop. Uh, is there any update of, i- is he gonna continue to do anything with the building or is he gonna, um, you know, continue to open up the business? I know the young lady with the restaurant is doing well. I see some, some construction going on with that. Uh, the glass shop, and I see them doing a lot of work and is, the building is coming along very excellent. Uh, but, uh, middle belt, uh, was supposed to be a pawn shop. It, did you hear anything or is anything gonna take place with that business there?
Yeah, I know that they're, I know that they're to catch it and go through the, the process. Um, you know, we're, we're still looking at uh, bringing in a full-time planner. Right now we're working with McKenna and Associates. And, um, they're doing an excellent job. However, you know, just to keep them within our budget. We, we only can have in here two and a half days out the week. So we're fielding the calls through the building department right now. Um, and then allowing McKenna to get their hands around everything that we had outstanding. But we had a lot of things that were just all over the place. So they're actually organizing everything and making sure that, uh, we get back to, um, just making sure that everyone's going through the process the right way. But some things did fall through the crack between, um, the former planner, one before that, and then, you know, getting up to now to, to McKenna and Associates, making sure that we have everything in order. So we'll follow back up with you, um, on that particular, uh, site. I have been in contact with them personally. So they are looking to, to move forward. They had, and, uh, they had some issues, um, as it relates to COVID, it slowed them down a little bit, but they're definitely looking to continue on with the development.
Okay.
I will follow up.
And it just, it, it just, you know, steers me and loop me to, you know, the monthly report. Are we gonna, you know, continue to have the, the monthly report, uh, from the administration office or, you know?
Yes, yes. I know that Mr. Alsonad is on the call right now. Uh, we will be meeting with staff tomorrow. I saw the memo go out saying, um, that they would do by the end of this week. So those will be worn out to you all.
Okay. And then also, um, some patchwork I need done on, uh, Riverview Street. That's off of Michigan Avenue there. And I, and I'll send you the pictures to, uh, for the patchwork that needs to be done on that street. Uh, and there's a green bag. The waste management left it and it been there for maybe, I, I don't even want to, to give you a timeframe of how long it's been left there, but it been, it been left there for quite some time with trash and garbage and, uh, and they never did come back and get it. So and I, and I email that to you as well. Um, po- police patrol on Harrison Street. Um, Isabel Street. And Glenwood Street. I, I would like definitely po- police patrol on those streets there. And the last thing that I do have, Mr. Chair, is I, I didn't get a chance to congratulate the auxiliary, the new auxiliary officers. So I definitely want to, uh, congratulate them on their success. And, and, and I wish them more success in the city of Inkster with our police patrol, I mean, with our police department. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, Councilman Don Williams. Okay, Councilman Chisholm.
Uh, did, did he happen to hear you? Cause he was muted. He just came unmuted.
Okay. Williams.
Can you hear me?
I can't hear you now.
Okay, um, I, I'd just like to say, um, um, I, I, I'm, I'm hoping that, that, that the speed bumps that. I, 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 I'm, I'm hoping that, that, that the speed bumps that the, uh. Block, the manner, block club is, is talking about, I hope that, 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 that can, can really start happening. Because I figure that you probably get a lot more people probably have to make contributions in order to. Put this, some of the speed bumps in, at, at that price, I think we can, if, if it's, if it's approvable. You know, uh, then we can probably think of other areas also. Uh, just like to say, uh, um, I'll, um. Be gone out of town and I'll be back, uh, probably Monday, uh, Tuesday. So if anyone need me, you can contact me through the mayor's office. God bless you.
All right, sir. We're right along, Councilman Chis.
Yes, um, one of the things was talking about the. Community cleanup that's coming up. I believe Tony Bailey had wanted to speak to that, is.
All right, cool. Let's jump her in.
All righty. She is on by telephone, so it may take a minute for her to get the, there we go.
Good evening, Mayor Council. This is, uh, Tony Bailey, Inster Beautification. For the month of August, our cleanup will be the twenty-eighth. Nine AM at the Rec Center. We'll be there to two o'clock, maybe, uh, longer. Those who need trash bags and gloves, all are welcome. We want everyone to come out, individual groups. Interfaith groups, businesses, block clubs. We want, we want to keep Inster beautiful. And as a reminder for where all our dumpsters will be, will be at Westwood Park, Weekly Park, Lamont Park, and up at the Rec Center. Thank you.
All right. You're welcome, Councilman Chis.
All righty, uh. Excuse me, I'm trying to pull up this. D-Snap, uh, information, if. You all were looking at. Tapping into those benefits through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, uh, the Inster location. You have three days left between the hours of eight AM and four PM. To go on-site, apply to see if you're eligible for those benefits. Um, other than that. I believe that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Wiley.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank the clerk. For her special consideration she gave me during these difficult times with no power. I really appreciate your efforts and thank you very much. The second thing I have is. If, uh, the mayor could possibly give me a list. Of the departments or people within administration. That council isn't privileged to. Is there any situations or? Uh, other places that we can call or we can contact without it going through you first? I have no problem with putting you on emails too. It's just that when you ask for something and someone tells you they have to. Mayor first, this diminishes. Uh, the representation that I have for District Three or the entire city. So I would just like to get a list of those, uh, ones that are not. Even off the line, I want to follow the group. Okay? And that's it.
Just to speak to that real quick, you know, like, like I said before, you can contact anyone in this administration. That's what we want you to do. Um, you know, however, you know, when we talk about the charter, the charter does say that you should go through. The mayor to the administration. That way we won't have, it seemed like, you know, folks have, you know, seven bosses. So at the same time, um, you know, I want you to get whatever you need done, and I'm, I'm pretty sure my staff is open to that. I'm just asking that you CC me on it. That way, if, if you don't get a follow-up. Then I can make sure that we, you know, that I'm in the loop and then we can follow up and get whatever questions you need done, done. Cause we want to work together to do that. I just, so I did see that from Plant Moran and his response. But I think his response was based off of, uh, the charter and, you know, just being, you know, just. In the right. Chain, if you will.
And, and that's fine too, but I just, you need to show me in the charter where it is.
I, I can't hear you, ma'am. You went away.
I said, you need to show me in the charter where it specifically says that. You know, I have no problem with doing it. I'm a beauty, I'm a woman. So it's, um, I just want to see it. I just want to understand it and then I will follow it. That's not a problem.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. But I don't want you to stop doing what you're doing. Let me say that right off, you know? Again, I, like I said, you know, it is in the charter, however. Um, my administration is open to you. To the council member, to the, to, to the constituents that we serve. Uh, we just want to make sure that things are being followed through and they're not all over the place. Because everybody have priorities. So we want to make sure that we're getting to what, you know, it is that you need done, whether it's, you know, pay, uh, uh, question that you may have. Or, you know, getting some trash picked up in your district. We want to make sure that we get that done for you. So don't, it's, it's no, I don't have a list. So you can talk to anybody, just CC me on it. That's all I'm asking. But I will follow up with you, ma'am. Okay. Councilwoman Wiley.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, that, that I said everything you heard. If I didn't hear, I didn't hear your feedback.
I'm sorry, Mayor Wiley.
Okay, okay. All right, and Councilwoman Washington.
Um, just want to, uh, just share some information. For those who, of course, we've been, a lot of us have lost power. Um, you have, um. Ability now to assign or, uh, do a claim for credit. With a DTE, um, if you have an outage of more than a hundred and twenty hours under the catastrophic conditions. Or if you've had a power outage of more than sixteen hours under a non-catastrophic condition, so. Um. That, um, link is newlook dot DTEenergy dot com, and that's where you're able to make, um. The claim. So that's all I have for tonight.
Oh, excuse me, Mayor, could she give that information again, please?
Oh, it's newlook. Dot DTEenergy dot com.
Maybe you can just pop that in the chat for, to Councilwoman Washington.
Okay, so.
And just to, the, the time in, uh, on that, um, as relates to, uh, power outages. Uh, the Easter Recreation Complex typically serves as our warming station and our cooling station. But the power was out there too, and the generator, uh, was actually out as well. So we have the people actually working on the generator to get. Uh, power back into that area. During this time, um, the Easter Housing Commission, under the direction of Erin Cooper. Um, has graciously, graciously opened up the Invision Center. To our community. So if you are without power and you, you still need resources, you need resources, you needed resources for food. Charging stations, um, just an area to, to, to have power and to be around other people. Um, of course, COVID restrictions are enforced there at the Invision Center located on Hickory Street. Uh, right off of Pine, between Pine and Indianapolis. Um, the whole, the entire community is, um, definitely. Open to use that space. There's a beautiful space. If you haven't seen it, that's Invision Center. It's located right in, uh, Easter Housing on, uh, Hickory Street. Also too, I want to, um, just thank. Rashida Tlaib and Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib and her, um, administration for. Supporting. The dream of the, uh, senior center to be located here in the city of Inster. Um, one of our matriarchs here in the community passed away, um, last year, Yola Jones. Who actually started this initiative. Along with our director for senior services, Denise Champagne. And, um, the initiative is now, it started in two thousand nine. And Mayor Hampton was leading that, uh, charge during that time. It's an article right now that I have pinned to my desk. That, uh, talked about earmarks during that time, and we were hoping that we could get an earmark. Well, I am pleased to, pleased to announce. That with the new administration, the Biden administration, along with, uh, Vice President Harris, that they brought back earmark. And our Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib, um, acts as city of Inster for different projects that we had to shovel, shovel ready. And we did, of course, with this body, agreed to take on the renovation project. Uh, that the, uh, Wayne County Commissioners granted us the eight hundred thousand dollars to the community development block rent. Renovation program that had to be done, uh, last year. We. Uh, are now looking at doing that, that development should be started here, hopefully within a few weeks. With that, we submitted to the, um, to the federal government. The two point five million that was outstanding to complete the entire city of Inster. Where I am pleased to announce again that we received that money. And we haven't, um, you know, got the money right now in our pockets, it's not in our coffers. We don't know how that's gonna work because what we were trying to do is get it to where. Again, like we did with the county, where we don't have to pay the entire eight hundred thousand or pay a big portion of money out of our general fund and then we have to get reimbursed. We're looking to see how we can work with, um, the federal government in such a way where it'd be the same type of deal where. We won't have to pay that money from the, from the call, from our coffers and then try to get a reimbursement, so. Uh, this is early on, the announcement just came over the weekend, so we will be having several other announcements surrounding this. Also too, our Jewel Jones, working with, uh, Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib. Uh, Senator Betty Jean Alexander. Um, also, of course, you know, I did say Rep. Jewel Jones. Um, working on the Easter school debt along with the Easter City Council. We were able to get, and thanks to Governor Whitmer, we were able to get twenty-five million of the thirty-five million dollar debt forgiven. Um, the council should have received that information in the email from Representative Jewel Jones. Um, Rep. Jones and I, we will be meeting, uh, with Treasury, just looking at the, the state treasury and of course our local treasury to look at. The impact to, uh, tax, our, our, our taxpayers within the city of Inster. What does that mean for us? And then also looking at the ten million dollars that we have left on the debt. How will we be, um, looking to get that paid off? And let me say this, the Rep. Jones is already hard at work. Um, he has ideas, he's all, so he's rallying the troops as it relates to the ten million dollars and getting that, um. Taken away as well. So, uh, hopefully next year, this time, we'll be talking about the Easter school debt is completely. Gone and eliminated, and we'll be moving forward. But during that time, like Councilman Chis has said earlier. Uh, we won't let that torch fall away as it relates to the Easter Public School District. Let me say this, and I've been saying it. That Baylor Wiston School is still sitting there. Uh, it's called Baylor Burge now. And one of the biggest things that has happened to, uh, our kids in this community relates to them being displaced. Um. The midst of distress that is causing them and families as they see. Buses from other communities coming into Baylor Wiston School, which is a perfectly fine school within our community. And they're being bussed out to other people, I'm sorry, to other communities to go to school every day. So. Know that we're having that conversation with Wayne Reissa right now, and we want to definitely make sure that we get some relief as it relates to that. So we have a building, we have land. If you haven't been over to Baylor Wiston, it's big enough to house an elementary. Middle school, and then to build us a new high school if that's the case. Along with while we're erecting prayerfully, the Rhythm and Blues National Hall of Fame and the Easter Technical School District. That'll be connected to that to celebrate the culture of music in our, um, in our, in our country. All right, and lastly, I am so proud that we talked about Aaron Sims and what, uh, his organization has done. To bring in the, a grant for three hundred and eighty thousand dollars with that, on top of that. Um, Gretchen Whitmer, our governor. Has identified, uh, monies for, uh, historical markers to go out through the community. So this is an effort that, uh, that Aaron Sam started years ago. And he brought it to my attention when I became the mayor. And him and his organization came in and we've had several meetings talking about how he's gonna renovate. And we were just talking about raising two thousand dollars last week, but God. I say that, but God. Um, he, he is awesome in everything that he does. He, he, he just shows, so I'm excited about that. And we will be there to celebrate with you, Aaron, as we talk about the groundbreaking ceremony and of course the ribbon cutting ceremony and the big announcement on this Thursday. For the Maple Max House. So if all minds are cleared, I'm looking at a couple of, let's see here, well, thank you, Councilwoman Washington, that put here in the actual comments. As it relates to, uh, those monies that you can receive for those damages that you're. You know, you're going through right now. We know that it's tough. Those of you that's still without power. Need our help, we're here to help, whatever we can possibly do. Please do not hesitate to give us a call. We're working diligently to get those things, to, to help you with whatever we can help you with, and I know DTE is working diligently to get the power back on, so. We'll keep you in prayers, you keep us in your prayers and your thoughts. If all minds are satisfied. Call for adjournment. That's for. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, it was, uh, I'm sorry, Bernie, it was motion by Councilman Williams and supported by Councilman Shaw. All in favor, say aye. All right, everyone, have a good weekend. I'm sorry, weekend, have a good week. Try to get to the week. Have a good week. Thank you.